Yes. Good evening, everyone, to the December twelfth, twenty twenty five. So we've opened the meeting, right? But before I go into all the, you know, motion to open the public hearing, I just want to state a couple of things. We have two public parents today, seventy point, seventy dash seventy two North Street, Three Storm Street, those are public parents, those are where the public can try and say something, get up. But when we go to all business, we will not be taking comments from the public, we ask you to respect that. It is a deliberation between the planning board and the applicant. We encourage you, we have your letters on file, I think there's nobody here that didn't read them. And we're gonna ask you to respect our proceedings. And if you don't think we can, we're gonna ask you to leave. Also, I wanna bring forth, because I wanted to be on the record. Please do not place items on our, on the door of our homes regarding an application that we are deliberating. Your avenue to get to us, city email, a letter to the, mail it to the city, or come to the meeting. But not at our homes. We see that, we, the planning board members, see that as harassment. Even if your intent was not that, I wanna warn you that we see it that way. It has happened to a member, I reported it to the police, they have a report. And we're asking you, even if your intent is not that, we see it as harassment. Being followed to talk about our decision on application, things being left on our doors, that cannot be. And I wanna make it very clear and put it on the record, we see that as harassment for the board members here. Please don't do it, if you've done it, don't do it again. If you have thoughts to do it, don't. And I wanna make that very clear. We have a right to be here, we're doing our jobs, let us, respect the process. You have other avenues that you can do, but coming to our homes and placing things on our door, following us around, that's not your avenue. Okay, now, let's start with the meeting. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing for seventy dash seventy two North Fifth Street?
I'll make a motion.
And a second. All in favor, and opposed, okay, let's go.
Yes, you should make the presentation.
Are you alone?
Yeah.
Do we have that in?
It's all on there. Seventy dash seventy two is a single structure on a four thousand and thirty-five square foot lot. We are proposing to subdivide it into two separate homes. Seventy would be on a two thousand and fifty-five square foot lot, and seventy-two would be on a one thousand nine hundred and fifty square foot lot. And the intention would be to sell these as single family homes.
Is it possible to show that in Google Maps to homes that he's talking about?
Sure.
I think that would be a better view, yeah. That would be a better view to give everybody a better, idea, I know what you're talking about, but.
Google Earth, maybe. Google Earth, maybe.
Google Earth.
And you talked about a lot of things at the zoning board and what happened.
Yeah, so we had to seek, uh, four different variances. For lot one, we had to get a north side yard setback. Required seventy point five feet, we have zero feet. Lot one, also, lot size, required four thousand square foot minimum, our lot is one thousand nine hundred and fifty. Lot two, south side yard setback, required seven point five, requested zero foot. Lot two, lot size, four thousand square feet, we requested two thousand and eighty-five square feet, and all the appearances were granted by UVA.
And we have the number even in plan.
And the board completed seeker in August.
That's right. Is it possible? I put an app on my phone today that shows everything, but still managed to get.
Can you point out where you're, where you're talking about?
So seventy would be to the left of the red dot, and seventy-two would be to the right of the red dot.
I see, okay.
Everybody understands what these two factors are, right? Okay. So, uh, do we have any questions from the board for this applicant? Yes, they're all uploaded in the meeting plan, yeah. Everybody gets emails when something is uploaded, right?
Okay.
Yes, that is up to you.
Instant notification.
Right, it's up to you to go and look at, okay? That's why we have it online like that. You know, that's one of the best things that we adopted, that, that everything gets uploaded, it's up to you to see it. Oh, no, oh, the rules, yeah.
Okay, you wanna open it to the public?
Okay. And any comments from the public for seventy-two dash, yes, may I?
Yes. Um, I'm a neighbor, I'm at sixty-eight North Fifth.
Name?
Karma Satoff.
Okay.
I've just gotten back after being two months abroad. I'm asking for a month's delay because underground, my house is also connected to seventy, to seventy.
Yeah, I wish you could see it better, but I just got to know where your house is.
Just parts of it is. This may be no issue, but I need to go to the Department of Public Works to ask questions because underground, all the pipes of sixty-eight, seventy, and seventy-two are connected. Fifteen years ago, prior to Mr. Galloway buying the place, there was a problem in seventy, the seventy pipes weren't working, backing up into sixty-eight North Fifth. The gentleman who owned it, I forgot his name, didn't have any money, and I had to pay to fix the pipes. This may be no issue whatsoever, and you obtaining the separation, but I wanna make sure that there's not gonna be an issue, and even in the separating of the, of the home, that there may even be a possibility to be put in the deed that in the event there's any problem with the different pipes, that we all have to pay. When that happened fifteen years ago, I also, I had to pay, I also investigated the possibility of separating the pipes. At the time, that was gonna cost fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Now it's probably double the trip.
Okay. I voted and I paid for just fixing it at the time. Again, so far, there hasn't been a problem in fif- over fifteen years. But I just need a little bit of time, so I'm asking for at least a, a month to, um, find out about it.
Could you, which one is yours?
Mine is sixty.
No, over here, we got, we have it up.
It's part of the, the three in or the.
On your knee in?
No, that's not my, that's not, that's.
That's not it?
No, go, no, keep, that's on the other side.
Get their back.
So, my house is sixty-eight, sixty-eight North Fifth, it is attached
There's no problem.
The living room wall and just one, I don't know, how do you explain it, the living room wall, my living room wall, and the bedroom upstairs is the only thing that's attached to that, to seventy.
So the concern is that there's some kind of underground pipes that you need an easement and maintenance agreement for, if, if you're separating it into separate lots.
Yes, okay.
Have you been to the code enforcer, have you reported?
No, I'm, I'm gonna, I've just got back, but I, so my request is a month to find out what needs to happen and or if there's anything.
Alright, so are we in agreement to the latest?
Yeah, you're the owner of the property.
Yes. Yeah, she's the owner of the property of the next two sixty.
And that's the other side, it's this side.
Just the round.
Keep going, keep going.
Which way, this way?
That's, this is my house.
Okay.
These are the two houses in question, boom, seventy and seventy.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. Okay.
It's.
We had the pipes inspected through the project, and they were also jetted, and, I mean, they were perfectly fine. I was involved the entire time, you never mentioned this concern once.
No, you're, you're absolutely right.
But she's away, she just said.
No, she was there from time to time, in the beginning, um, and I also don't see how this would be able to subdivision.
So, working fine is great, the only way it's relevant, though, is if, in the subdivision, you're drawing like fake lines on the ground. So if her pipe passed across the line, now she needs a right for that to happen, vice versa. So, I, I mean, I think it's a reasonable request to make sure that the utilities are all separated, we asked about that early in July. And you had said that you would be, that you were separating all the utilities. So, I don't know if that actually happened.
Well, I'm, I'm, electric, yes. Yeah.
Talking about the ground. Yeah, but, but, we were also talking about the water and the sewer, because they so I think it's worth the investigation as to whether they crossed the, the proposed property line.
And I totally agree, well, how, how do we see it?
I'm just confused about something, isn't set sixty-eight, hasn't that already been subdivided from seventy and seventy-two?
Subdivided.
Yes, it was that, for those pipes aren't.
Right, figure out it. Underground pipes.
And I'm just, I, you know, I, it's I'm just, I'm telling you, I just got back, I just saw this.
No, it makes sense, I'm just.
No, no, I'm just, I, I'm separate, my house is separate, except it's attached, the houses and the pipes underground. And we can't, we from fifteen years ago, what happened, they said couldn't, they're all, they're all connected.
How long, how, how long do you need for this to look into, do you mean a month?
I think it, yeah, I think, I'm, I'm gonna go to, um, report and for the code enforcer tomorrow, just, uh, you know, send them an email to, to schedule an appointment.
Is it VPW also?
I don't know who's gonna have these records, I.
By VPW, Public Works, yeah, buy them also.
I got a question, like fifteen years ago, you had a problem. And you, and you fixed it, you remedied it, what was the problem and how was it fixed?
There was a, I have to go back to the records, but there was, they had to go underground and fix the pipes.
What, what was wrong?
Was it a sewer issue or what?
She said it was backing up.
So did they se-
So when it backed up from seventy into mine, into the, the, um, drain or the piping in my basement.
Did they separate it at that time?
No, they just fixed the, that, they fixed the problem.
I know what you're talking about, that's an issue, that's an issue in Hudson, sorry. I heard that you were given the option, but you chose to fix it, because it was expensive, quite expensive at that time.
Uh, when you say option, it had to be fixed.
No, but, but the option was, yes, it had to be fixed or repaired, but you also had mentioned there was another option where the pipes could be separated.
The pipes, if they could be separated.
But it was too expensive at that time, I heard you loud and clear.
Correct, correct. Correct, and by the way, I'm not suggesting that we, we separate them then, I just, I, and I don't even know if it was appropriate to bring this up, but my kids got back.
No, it's probably their own chat.
And so, one option, I, I mean, pending any other public comment, could make this a condition, that they
Yes, it was.
for any required easements to the neighbor, despite that he doesn't have to come back before this board, but it still means that something has gotta get worked out.
Well, if we gave you till the eighteenth, will you have a little bit more information, because we can put it into a condition?
Yes, but I think having.
Oh, yeah, the question was a change.
When it was repaired, did they have to remove and replace pipes? Or do they just put a, well, I think they call it a check valve, which prevents it from back in.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Because the only homes in the old plumbing, they didn't have, I, I call it check valves, I, I, it's something else. It prevents backflow. What do you call it?
Backflow preventer.
Let backflow prevent, so we're finding out today that most of the houses, a lot of the houses in Hudson don't have it, and when they buy or refurbish a house, they put these backflow.
I can go and find, like, look in my paperwork, but I, I really don't know, I just remember being traumatized.
Would that be, with the, with the VPW, when they do so like that? They have to get a permit for the work they did, so, and that permit, it will tell you what they did, yeah.
Yeah, but, tell, fixing something that exists is a different question than someone going in and sneaking the pipes and identifying where the pipes flow.
Well, we are, well, we, she, you know, if she can provide us with the permit, that'll tell us exactly what happened.
I don't know. I really don't know. And again, I'm I'm interested in seventy and seventy-two being taken care of, I also wanna make sure that sixty-eight is taken care of. If there's something in the deed, those pipes are gonna cost too much money to separate. And if something happens, I just wanna be protected, so that if something happens, that somehow, that seventy, whoever owns seventy and whoever owns seventy-two, that it is a three-way.
Where, where does the pipe come in, to which address?
They're all.
Do you know?
They have, I'm guessing they make some sort of a Y outside of the building, again, we had the drain lines camera from our building, and there was no issue found, and they're in proper working order, she had it repaired, and there hasn't been an issue in fifteen years, so.
You have a report.
Yeah, when you had the, when you had the drain line, when you put the camera in, maybe the plumber has like a little sketch of how it works.
I can ask him, is Lady Ruder, that's good.
Because you said originally, it was, it was a single property, all three houses were together?
Yeah.
So, uh, return to the, if, if, if they had an easement, would that remedy her issue regardless?
So, it's not, what she's asking for in an easement and maintenance agreement, saying how, who would, how will parents be split amongst the parties if there was an issue in, you know, the distribution pipe versus the main? It's kind of hard to just guess at what.
But the, the main disagreement has nothing to do with.
Well, yeah, that, I mean, that's what she's asking for.
But, but not from us, we, we don't grant that, so.
It would be something that gets worked out with the party.
Exactly, so I'm saying.
So that's why I said, an option tonight is to put a condition on that says, um, applicant shall provide any necessary easement to neighboring property, but then outside of this meeting, we're gonna have to determine whether there's an, an easement acquired.
Right.
I, uh.
Would that satisfy you?
I'm, 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 I didn't completely follow, I'm asking for at least a thirty day delay, so I can go to either the code enforcer, or you said the Department of Public Works to, to find out more, so that I can then go, okay.
I'm okay.
What we're suggesting, the possibility is that we grant the permit with a condition that this issue be worked out.
And gives you, which would, and that condition would give you an easement, so that you would have permission to whatever you have to protect your property.
Okay, if that is the case, fine, except for, in the past, in working with certain groups, I have been stonewalled. And I, things have not moved, and I've had to pay the price for it. So, I'm not adverse to it, but I don't have the confidence that after you give that, that I, it will, it will be followed through.
Uh, Lloyd?
We also don't know, you know, there's a whole sewer project from one board, so we don't know where the lines are gonna run. You may even have the option of going out to the front, uh, your front lawn, and connecting, that might be easier. We just don't know what's gonna happen with that project, it'll be designed that.
Well, I wanna get a motion, uh, to give her the time. We wanna vote on that, and, um, any, oh, any other comments from the public on this issue? Okay, I wanna put a motion in Florida, we give her the time. So this second. Uh, uh, the next meeting, she's talking about a month, so it'd be December, when is the next one, December seven?
December eighth.
December, Zeme, okay. The next meeting is December eighth. And you will submit what you have, and then we'll refer to that. I think it's just reasonable.
I think at, on December eighth, we may end up in this spot, though, requiring a condition that they execute easement
That's exactly what's happening.
Any pipes that cross the property.
I understand, but she doesn't quite understand that, and I'm.
No, I, I do want you to say that, but I'm not educated enough, and I want.
No, don't worry about it, you're not doing. Uh, the eighteenth, I don't think she'll have the information, if you.
The eighteenth of November?
Yeah, if you have the information by the eighteenth, yeah.
No, you have to send the hearing tonight, so.
But, let me see, oh, she's, well, what?
Yeah, that would be about, yeah, can you?
I don't, um, no, I, I, I'm leaving, sorry, leaving, it's Friday morning, and I'm not back until the eighteenth. So, I, I don't, I'm gonna go there tomorrow, up to the Department of Public Works, I'll do whatever I can, request to expedite things, but you're, when are you meeting again, you're not meeting? The eighteenth of, of November.
Of November, yes.
What, oh, six, oh wait, maybe I'll be back. It's a possibility, but.
But what will have happened in the next six days?
Yeah, she has, she's gonna go to VPW or wherever to keep the permit and find out what exactly did they do, and if, you know, they may have separated, you're not sure. Because I know there was this problem.
Oh, I'm telling you, they did not separate, if anything.
But it may not be an issue from the work.
Was that, there might have been a valve or something, that, I, I don't know.
That this will never occur again.
The best in managing that, other than I know I paid a, a big bill, and they had to open up the, they had to open up prospect and go underneath.
And so they did put it in, if they did all that work, but that's what you're gonna find out, right?
I doubt she's gonna find informa- information on what they did, it's not necessarily gonna show where the, the, it gets, gonna get you from the street to where the distribution center is, and then there's gonna be private lines. So we may not, we may not have that information on file.
Even in a month, we may not have that, but we just want to follow each other's.
We, I suspect that we either, it's the, the information is on file or it's not on file.
Alright.
And we're gonna, I'm gonna find out if it's on file or not on file. I'm just now, um, and maybe I should have been doing this ten years ago, but I attempted over those years, certainly since, since Mr. Galloway has owned that property, and have not been not been communicated with, over and over and over again, so, it's not that I didn't attempt to. I was not, it was, they, they, I got, um, radio silence over the years over there, so I just left it alone. I, I'm not, I'm not trying to throw, I know this is throwing a wrench in the plan, and it, I apologize, but I wanna make sure that going forward, that my house is as protected as, as your homes are, and I don't know, it may be in, you know, in five years, something blows, or it may never be. But regardless, I think, and again, I don't know, and you can tell me it's not, it's not necessary or appropriate, you know, but I think it's valuable for the potential owners to know, whoever buys these houses, these houses, that those pipes are all connected, it is not like sixty-eight North Fifth has their pipes, seventy has their pipes, and seventy-two has their pipes, unless your work, you went underground and you redid all those pipes, which you couldn't have because you would have had to done something with my pipes.
Not necessarily if they connect outside of the building, they don't connect inside the building, I would understand her point, if they all came down and then met in one basement, they don't.
So you have an official report that shows that?
Yeah, if we just need information on how it, where, where the pipes are.
Do you, do you have?
My diagram on the construction shows.
But if the public, if that's the case, sir, then back then, and this was many years ago, but if the pipes weren't working in seventy, whatever happened in seventy, it was blowing up in my basement in sixty-eight. So since then, there's been no work until you started working on it.
Okay, you know.
I got it, you can, I don't know if we're just.
No, what, I'm gonna do this, I wanna retract that motion for thirty days and put it to the eighteenth, and I'll give you a chance to find out if there's a report, if not, because we can do, um, what did you say that was?
Wait, 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 yeah, I'm requesting that you don't do that, because I only have tomorrow.
But you said you're going away.
I'm going away, to, on Thursday morning, and I'm not back until the eighteenth.
I understand that.
And I don't know if I'm gonna get every, like, work, I don't know if they're gonna be done, and I hit, why can we wait the thirty days? Now it's like, I'm now in pressure to get something done in twenty-four hours.
Okay, that's up to the board, but do you think it's fair that we hold up the applicant for you going away? I mean.
Yes, because I'm, I'm making a request.
Yes, you are.
It's first.
No, he's been here before, this is a public hearing.
Uh, okay, so I am making the request, and I don't think it's unreasonable.
No, I'm not saying it's unreasonable, it's.
Right, so that's what I'm asking for.
We, we as a board, um, I had put in thirty, now I'm just retracting that, because it, it looks like they may not find the right information that's needed. Where would we find that?
I, I think Josh probably has some information, any construction plans about how the pipes are laid out, and if not, it's.
Do you?
That's.
I mean, there's a rise diagram in all the construction documents, yeah? For our property.
Underground, underground, the underground.
Shows the pipes coming down through the basement, and then to the point where they would leave the building, it was shown outside of the building.
But you also just said too, earlier, that Lady Ruder, which is Randy Segura's business, okay, but they also took a camera and went underground, so would you have any documentation regarding that?
I don't think they reported it, but, if, always keep them back out there, but we checked them, we don't have a concern, I would think that she should call them and have them come look at.
Again, the pipe, the concern here isn't the quality of the pipes, I think the board believes you that you cleaned the pipes out and they're jetted and they're in good shape. The concern is, once these lots are sold off to individual owners, the ownership, if the crap, if the pipes are crossing property lines, um, there needs to be cross rights for that, so that, you know, one person doesn't shovel water off the centrally.
I don't, yeah, I don't see an issue with that.
So I, I think it's just due diligence.
Nina seems very reasonable that this request is being made, that this be figured out, and so whatever needs to happen so that this is figured out, so that you're protected in the future, I think we need to ensure can happen before determinants are granted.
Okay.
Sorry.
On Nicole Vidor.
Nicole.
I, I think, it sounds to me like it's very similar, like if there's a shared driveway. You know, um, that has to be established by who's gonna maintain the driveway. And it's sort of the same thing, I mean, I, I'm sure Teresa, in your experience as a broker, certainly in mine, though, you're right, this does exist in Hudson, and it can cause a lot of problems.
Yes, it does.
And it can also make it very challenging, actually, to move a property. Because not everybody wants to have a property that's connected to two other sewer systems, so I think, and that, as you said, Lloyd, you know, we're doing a whole new.
Right.
Right? And part of the reason we're doing that is because our infrastructure is in really serious state. So it doesn't, I would agree with Gabby, I don't think it's outrageous for somebody who's already been in the position that they had to pay for something that wasn't their fault, because the person next door didn't have the money to pay for it.
Well, all I'm saying is that.
At least, there should be something in this arrangement.
In thirty days, will we be able to determine this, that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, you, you probably can, depending on the records. But regardless, you're gonna write it up generically, that basically there has to be agreement in place, or, you know, cross agreement in place.
That's okay, that's okay.
Because it sounds like most of the infrastructure probably comes down inside the house, into each basement, leaves the basement, comes to a connection point, you know, a, a point exterior, and then goes out to the road. So, while you absolutely need to find the information, I don't know how much it's gonna change the con- I don't know how much it's gonna change the conditions necessarily, it needs to be figured out absolutely, very upon. But I'm not sure, you know, if the pipes come this way or the pipes come this way, what's gonna change?
Right.
It's not gonna change the language by which you come to agree with them.
Is it reasonable to give the? The neighbor thirty days with the ceiling to figure it out?
Or, you know, the the limit.
Well. We could get our next, uh, the meeting after November would be actually December ninth is the Tuesday. That makes it three weeks. Oh, you mean the meeting.
Our next meeting from this day.
Yeah, our next meeting after the November, the next November.
Yeah, so we can give it to the next meeting today.
Which one? Eighteenth or December nine, okay. Uh, December, December nine, okay.
Yeah.
So can I get a motion to give the, to grant the, um. That is every week.
So, motion to continue the public hearing.
The motion to continue the public hearing to December ninety four.
In seven.
Yes.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that is very.
Charlie.
How many John Tunes, Rodney, and I'm for a lot of them.
And submit whatever documents we have.
And you've been also like an active applicant that come here to be community minded. So if you know something, you can we can they reach out to you, ma'am?
I mean. I'm gonna call Mike Myers, who does all the utilities, who.
Right.
Who have the answer.
Well, have him reach out to her. So we can, um, you know, come satisfy her issues.
You know. I mean, this is a two point five in Montana, you know, come on, be community minded.
No, I don't wish that, I just don't think it takes three weeks to figure it out.
Well, that's, that's your thought. The majority disagrees. Good, so, um, so please have him reach out to her, it's okay, right, ma'am, that we.
Thank you, right.
Right, if you can, right, if this can be resolved sooner, okay?
You set the hearing for.
So I can't, that's it, can't change the public hearing, that's the same.
You can figure it out.
We can figure that.
You're like, it's on the public hearing, right?
Yeah. So we.
What do you have questions for now?
Well, I was, I was just as part of investigating this and like the other, other utilities, the little opener.
No, no, they continued it to December ninth.
To December nine.
No, but I think Lloyd.
He's just making a comment to us.
It didn't occur, you're not adjurating, doesn't that, you just did.
No, we give.
So we're still in a public hearing, no?
Yeah, just, just make comments, yes.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
So at the same time, you know, the you have an issue with the sewer, there's other utilities, there's water. I'm talking about gas, I would like to have a whole, you know, I think it would behoove everybody to have a comprehensive. Analysis of the whole deal, so it doesn't create problems for either, you know, either property in the future.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think it should be all utilities, not just the water, so look at water, sewer, electric and. Kind of all.
That that does make sense. And it is something that.
It was easy.
For another subdivision, cuz I see a lot of people are doing this now, they're subdividing their. Two or three families or pouches together.
Yeah, with something. Lloyd.
Yeah.
You have mentioned the city jewelry, uh, jewelry project?
Yeah, it's in design phase right now.
It's in the design phase.
Yeah, Robert Perry's spoken about it, he did a whole, kind of a formal meeting. I think there's plans being brought up.
Yeah.
Maybe a DPW now. They are, they have some idea where they're gonna put the catch basin.
All right, is that that goes out to bed?
It's gonna go in that fluid gonna march.
That's all gotta go to bed, it's all gotta go to the public hearing, so we're looking a year or two down the road for that project.
Just looking forward, that's all.
Please, don't forget for a second, you have a foundation.
Okay, uh. Oh, that's on that.
You gotta make a motion.
Uh, okay, then.
We just did a vote.
We just.
No.
Did you vote?
There's a different, the founder, gift because I want to.
Wait. Oh. What, what founder? What address, that's not the address, let's see it, please. Did you go to see address?
Alright, I'll find the address.
Find the address and get back to it. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing for three stone?
I'll make a motion.
Having a.
I'll do it.
All in favor?
Fine.
Any votes?
Hi, I'm back.
Hey, Thomas, what you did?
Uh, yes, I, uh, I sent you all a nice drawing, all with all the side measurements of where the chicken coop is going to be. Uh, so it's a eight by four area, so including the roof seventy nine. All have seventy eight feet in the bathroom next neighbor, twenty feet on each side, actual rate. More than twenty feet, I did a little drawing of where the coop is gonna be moved, it's an area eight by sixteen. And the sidelines will be twenty feet on each side of the neighbor and seventy eight feet to the back.
Did you upload that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was.
And there's not a fashion on that, it's my little drawing.
And you have only one, four hens, not five. You have four.
I have four, but doing chicken math. When the chicken, when the chicken dies, you can't introduce just one because they can't, they take on it, so. In the future, if one passes, I might get two, so I might end up with five, which is the one three, would that be all right? Of course.
I mean, personally, no accident, you know, I I've been very far with it, I.
I know that chicken is. Sure.
You know, you're always have to.
I'm not, I'm not a favorite.
I had a friend that had forty two and I had to help her with that, so.
They're gonna be walking around Hudson, still on warranty, I've seen that in Germantown.
I have chicken boots that know that stuff.
I've watched them walk around the streets of Germantown, go in the stores. They came into the post office and like, who is this? They looked at me too. I'm not a fan of them, but.
They're already, not my kind of people, but.
The code says you have a right to have them and that's.
I don't have one.
Okay, so. Any questions from the planning board for the chicken coop?
No.
Any questions from the, um, public? Or, um, the the three stone avenue, right, that's, yeah, don't matter.
She hopefully might even see me soon.
Nobody has questions about the tickets?
You have a res- you have this resolution?
Yes, we do, and I get a motion to.
Well, huh, I have closing here.
Let me try, there's some.
I'm mostly the close, yes, I have that. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing for?
Let me show everybody the map.
Okay. So I hold on to the motion until we see the map on the. It says, I said, yeah, since you was like, I saw it the other day.
Am I embarrassing or professional?
Yeah, it was nicely done, it was nicely, it was nicely done.
But, you know, I'm just not a fan of them at all. You do like eggs, definitely, yeah, I like eggs.
Chicken.
So that's the property.
Any questions on this? From the, um, from the public, miniature human being. One of those scary. I think it's been the streets, I think this. Well, I appreciate.
Get it out there. Make sure the public gets to see it.
Open a couple. Okay. Any, any questions coming out, um, the planning board, public? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for three stone avenue?
So we do. Don't, 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 I mean, wanted to do the resolution.
Well, let's close the hearing.
That's close.
Oh, yeah, oh, I thought it was bottom.
You think I'm doing something wrong?
No, I'm just checking.
I appreciate the backup.
I don't know, okay, I appreciate it.
I said I heard a motion, I remember.
Okay, uh, motion, and I seconded it, okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Okay. Public hearing is closed.
Then the board has a resolution, um, to approve chickens. With, uh, five conditions, payment of fees and escrow, there shall be no more than five hens on the property, any boosters. The hens must be kept in the enclosure depicted on the site plan at all times. There has to be continued compliance with all setbacks that were in seventy dash seventeen of the city code and no on-site sales of eggs or chicken meat.
There's nothing in there about complaints from neighbors.
They can complain to the.
Oh, they can, always, yeah.
Just like in the others.
Okay. I'm going to accept the resolution.
I make a motion.
And I will second it. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, enjoy your chickens.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Don't get any turkeys on that.
Okay.
You know, this stuff.
Alright, so now we're going into, oh no, now I wanna get a motion to open, uh, to. To set the public hearing for seven twenty four dash seven twenty six Columbia Street. We can do it either, oh, what about four? I said next month. Yeah, what do you think? Next month or the eighteenth to put them on as a public hearing.
Next month.
Beyond.
Next month, okay, which is, uh, the December nine nine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, can I get a motion to set public care for seven twenty four dash seven twenty six Columbia Street?
Second.
Gene was the, okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Okay, so now the public hearing has been set for seven twenty four dash seven twenty six Columbia Street on twelve. Nine twenty five. Now we're going into old business, and this is, we're not taking any comments from the public. And this is a reservation between the planning board and we know that, you know, talk to we have. And we actually respect our proceedings, how we do our business. We're not here to not look please everybody for disrespect what we do, that's all we ask. Okay. Number of action? Okay, can we take it for? Five minutes. We're gonna take five minutes, take, Brandon, turn that off. Five minutes.
Okay.
It's not the Teresa.
That's me. I'm sorry, um.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, follow meeting back to order. Planning board meeting for November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Now we're going to other business. Now, did everyone get the revised resolution for the Collins dot application? Okay, so tonight we're gonna continue with this. I was hoping that we will continue where we left off, but to be fair, does anyone have anything to say about what we've already done? Any board members?
Yeah, I mean, I think they're indicated in this draft.
Okay, so that means as we go forward, we'll see what you sent.
Well, before, from before the point that we're going forward from.
Great, hi, um, so we also received the revised draft update, um, when it was uploaded. Um, we did our best to put together a response to that draft.
Right now, we sent it to us like, what?
I understand.
It was updated Friday, we worked as hard as we could to get it out, we reviewed the entire resolution. The points which we're up to right now, like we said on the record, we're grateful to a majority of that, we have no issues with it. We think it puts together a concise and accurate, for the most part, history of the project. Uh, we also responded to the conditions. Uh, you know, I know there are members on the board who want to push this forward, um, and want to get this to a resolution, as do we. I mean, we've spent a lot of time here and a lot of money on trying to get this processed. And even at the last meeting, there seems to be still a lot of disagreement and amongst the board members as to what conditions the board's actually asking for. So we went ahead to try and bring this to a resolution, is we looked at each and every one of the conditions, including the ones that were uploaded on Friday. On top of what we have offered in the past and the public comments and discussion that never made it into a condition. And we put together a list of, a reasonable list of conditions that we think will bring this to an amicable resolution. And will address the concerns of the board members. Um, we would like to go through that with the board tonight and ask the board. If they're in the position to do so, to make a motion to vote on that resolution.
So you made a resolution that you wanna go through with us?
It's the board's resolution.
That you.
We revised and put a list of conditions that we would be ready to add on the conditions.
You could pack it if you made it up.
But we have an updated resolution from our board as of today.
Let me finish, look, man, fuck. We, we have an updated resolution that we would like to go through. And then when we come to something that maybe you have an objection to or wanna change or don't understand, then we can discuss it, how is that?
That, if that's, would you please, Ben? Alright.
So, this is how it's gonna go tonight, because we're gonna move on. Each board member can get, uh, what if I do, with three minutes to talk, if you have something to say? Say it.
Per item.
Right, per item, we gonna, we're gonna vote on it. The, if, if we don't get any none of this vote, the majority will rule. Once we get that vote. The majority will rule, whichever way it goes, we are moving on. That issue is done, it's decided. Okay?
So.
Anybody down, chef, consider? Okay. So we um, we kind of started, I mean, left off on page twelve. Condition number four. Oh, yeah, I did.
Alright, well, let's see if I can get this one up there, it's a different.
Okay, let me do the. Do you have one?
Yeah, I have one for you.
You don't give them all that.
No, I didn't.
No?
No.
I might have one too.
No, no, I didn't give them all that. Oh, I have a gift. Do you have one? You, how many you need over there? No, you did, there was any one? This is ours. Do you have ours?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'll do.
That's the latest one.
Is that the one, uh?
That was the one that incorporated the comments we received today.
Last afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, this is late this afternoon.
Twelve thirty, right, I mean, sorry, two thirty.
Right, that's the one I gave you, the one I gave you that everything.
Right, that's, that's two thirty, so I'm only fine.
Okay?
Be clear, there was one attached with the agenda on Friday.
Okay, no, we got another one since then.
Yeah.
Which you're going to.
Which is what I was just handing.
Yeah, that's what you're just handing.
The board just forgot it.
We just got it.
In this second, get out of that, so we can move to that.
The, the changes are identified as a phrase.
So updated November twelve.
Doctor?
Okay, so at the last meeting.
I'll send you a moment, so we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
And this is V seven eleven dash dot twelve. What? It's my chair on, I'll say. See now, this is weird.
What time did you send it?
I didn't send it, sorry, I missed it.
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed it.
You get a better, you send it a better. This is how.
Uh, no. I mean, my, she sent it at, what is that, two o'clock?
You know what? Do you have extra copies?
Okay, two fifty-two. She said two fifty-two here.
Not a half, no. You say, ask if you have actual.
But you can pull it up on the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, but when I have, because it's a.
It does say V seven.
Yeah, yeah, I was hoping there is. It's, it's a PDF.
I can give you a PDF exactly there. I can make it a PDF and send it to you.
Yeah, yeah, because it, because it's, it's bringing up its text, so it's not gonna show up, so.
Okay, let me turn into a PDF and run it onto you, and then you can share it, so everyone can follow it.
Yeah, so.
Send it to, uh. Company now. Let me know when you send.
Okay, thank you. Okay. One of us will talk at a time, we won't talk at the same time, you know, arguments, we're all gonna give each other three minutes. And we're gonna go on, please don't be, please don't get emotional, don't get disrespectful, because that, then we'll be on. Hope nobody leaves us, but you know, I'm gonna be there for a while.
Why, are you done?
You're sending now?
I'm sending right now. Okay.
Let me see.
Got it.
Let me see.
Send it.
Right, yeah, no, yeah.
Does, you circulating the resolution?
Just to random, so he can pull it up on the screen, it's put on it, we just handed out, it, it, the resolution that was posted plus a few changes that we see today.
Yeah, I have a post.
If you're turning it back away.
Sure, yeah.
A little bit so the public can see it and they can follow it on the screen.
Oh, let me just do one thing, so let's, um, you sent some in Martin A D, right?
Yeah.
We spoke to you at the screen.
Now, see it?
It goes turn up a little bit, yes, so people can look.
That's better, thank you.
Be careful, and it does fall, be careful, it falls from the top.
Yeah, the projector also has to be moved, so.
Yeah, that's good.
That, like, this should come out.
Oh, there, is that better? Yeah, that's okay, for me, that's.
Okay, so there.
Thanks. As you know, go like this.
Yeah, but what are you gonna, keep going, keep going?
A little bit more.
Uh, a little bit more.
Then the order will do it. You wanna push it higher, like we did the last time? You want this too? That's why?
Yeah, yeah, a little too high, Lord, stand.
I, I, I was trying. Particularly here.
And we went to the last. It was really good for someone. It was good for me.
That's really good, that's fine. You did a really good.
We'll be showing you right.
I'm trying, I don't know, I have a budget. Big contacts, that'll be just me right now. Or maybe.
Yeah.
The judge on favor.
That's pretty, same, I'm just.
Listen, okay, so.
They.
Over here. Over here. Shit. Yeah, it's gotta be a little bit of that.
Here, uh, page twelve. Here.
Public and. Page one. Well, I have this as a. Where we at, which one?
Page twelve.
Yeah, yeah, we're on page twelve, but where's the?
It's not the seven.
We'll give them, we'll need to convert to PDF since then, the number is changing a little bit, so I would just, uh, go up.
Go to the bottom.
That's it. Is that it?
Be further resolved on board operation conditions.
Oh, yes, you go down, that's it, just go down.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
What about things that are before this line? That were changes that were new?
It's current. No, it's all around here. Look.